Thank you, Liz.
Okay, Nick, you're up.
Tom, should we say that nothing was, what we discussed, there was no decision made in the second session?
Yeah, sure. There was no decisions were made in the second session.
I thought we had to make that statement.
No, it's good to do. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So the monthly report for the fire department for December and then I have the yearly report. For the month of December of 2023, responded to forty-five calls for service, including swift water rescue, a couple accidents, and a bunch of false alarms.
How many is that?
Twenty total out of forty-five.
Probably both.
Or lost.
Lost.
Yeah. All unintentional, but it could be from a lot of, we get a lot of steam from showers and stuff like that. That was under false alarm, so.
Right.
For the year for 2023, we had four hundred and twenty-five calls for service, which is down from the last couple of years, which was up to around four hundred and seventy. Twenty-nine fires, which is structure fires, chimney fires, vehicle fires, brush fires. With twenty-nine rescue incidents, which is medical assists, motor vehicle accidents, searches for persons on land or on water, five dive-related calls, including ice rescue, swift water, and swimming recreational area rescues. We had fifty-eight hazardous conditions, which is power lines, chemical gas leaks, different stuff like that. Thirty-six good intent calls and two hundred false alarms.
Any questions from council members? Any questions from the public? Don't go yet. What's that? How does this work, Michael, with this?
The raise hand function is also about here.
The same?
Yep.
Do you see any?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. The youth department. It's your call.
My voice is not Carrie as well as Nick, so I have to really use. All right. So December was a slower month for us for programming. You know, there's a lot of breaks. We had a three-week series with Shaker Museum. They came in and they taught the kids how to weave and braid fabrics. It was really great. The Shaker instructor, who is through the Shaker Museum, they come to us free of charge. She has such a good time if she wants to come back and teach our kids more in-depth weaving on her own without Shaker Museum. So we're going to look at how we get her into the mix this winter. We've also continued the drumming with Operation Unite. Students have been participating with them, were able to perform at the annual Quanza event on December sixteenth. The German can bring anywhere from ten to twenty participants into the group because they do it in the main area. So it's just this big open area. They're drumming, kids are gone in. And they usually get a pretty good group participating. Beautiful racket also introduced drums. It was a little balmy drum. She's the one that's got the circle, it's metal. So pretty interesting. And the students were really excited about it and they took the time to actually learn different songs on it. And before the break, two of the kids played a balmy drum law, about half a dozen other kids sang some songs they could learn. And then at both occasions, we have been to Stiff Circus still working with us through December. They got to work on new skills with the kids, their two kids. And one of the things of note is that one of our younger participants, I think she was about six, she learned how to walk on the peg stilts. She went from never having done it before to being able to do it almost completely by herself within twenty minutes. And the look of satisfaction on her face, the next slide is just, it's really an idea launch, so. Her progression video is on our Instagram. If you guys are into Instagram, you can check it out there. All right. Our school of Columbia County finished out their session with us. They're going to be returning again this winter. We're actually going to increase the amount of time that they come work with us because all the kids really enjoyed the art classes. The record tent is also really got into it. The teachers, again, from the Art School of Columbia County are actually working artists and they come in and they teach with a bunch of different mediums. They switch it up every week. Keeps kids really interested. And they did an art show at the winter meet and greet that we had until the time of December. We also had holiday parties right before winter break at Fourth Berths. We listened to music, ate special snacks. Each student was provided a gift. We had some donations from the state troopers and the Hudson Farmers Market collected donations as well. So we were able to give a gift to every kid who participated in the program. Under the younger citizens in the art program. Operation Unite was fitness and fun dance continued with us. And they also, one thing that happened at the church is the students started learning and practicing life skills this month because they noticed that at the end of the day, the staff were cleaning up, they were doing dishes, taking out the trash, all of that. And they got really interested in it and they started volunteering for it. We had to create a chart because they would fight over three copies to do it. So they take a lot of pride in it and they particularly enjoy doing the dishes and taking out the garbage, probably because you get outside to take out the garbage, so. Our team numbers have been a little low this month, especially because of basketball season. So a lot of our team participants either are on a team or they go to support the team during games. But what we have noticed is that the teams that are coming are getting more engaged in the activities we have downstairs in our game room. So we have a pool table, ping pong, hoop shoot, air hockey, foosball, and knock hockey. And those are getting a lot more engagement than they usually get, which is both the same. We've also taken a couple field trips to some basketball games with kids so that they don't have to walk there and then walk back. On the weekends, we are bringing back after the break there, we're going to do the open gym for basketball. It's coming Sunday is men's open gym. We have gotten up to seventeen participants some weekends. Some weekends we don't get any. We're really hoping that that'll take off, especially now that it's colder. It's really great. It's, you know, there are not a lot of places where you can go play basketball inside. So every other week it's men's, then it's women's, and we're hoping to really build that up. We've also had some people ask if we can bring back indoor soccer, which used to happen there a lot. So we're going to be doing that as well. We're also exploring any other opportunities that there might be interest in. I know there's a couple of people have spoken about pickleball as well, so we'll see what we can get going. So I'm going to be reporting some more numbers now about registration and attendance. And something I just wanted to talk about as I'm doing that, I think the numbers are really important so that we can track who's participating, how many are participating, where they're coming from, all of that. I do want to make clear that the numbers that we're talking about are actually representing childrens and families in our community. So they depend on the resources that we're providing, not only do we provide a space for families that may not be able to afford aftercare, private school care, otherwise, but we're also offering meaningful programs, structured, socializing opportunities, life skills, variety programs, and a snack and meal each day. So I think these numbers are important to analyze and please don't lose sight of the people in the community that those numbers represent as we talk about them. So for the numbers, attendance was low. And actually, early on in December, the school sent out an email asking parents to not send their kids to school if they were sick because a lot of illness went around this last month, which we were really grateful for. But then obviously, they're not going to school, they're not coming to after-school program, so. Registration didn't change for our case or two. It's been pretty consistent. We get about fifteen kids a day. Some of the kids come only Monday, Tuesday. Some of them come, you know, every day. Got about twenty-four registered with about fifteen showing up every day. Third and Eights, we had one extra registration last month. We had an average of thirty-four a day, which was really low for us. But again, same thing. Sometimes kids come every day. Sometimes kids come once or twice a week. And also for the kids that are in like sixth, seventh, and eighth, we start to be a drop-in for them. They'll come if they want to, they'll leave. If they peek their head in the door and their friends aren't there, they'll head out, so. Team registration went up, an average of ten students being served an evening. Again, basketball season is a slow time for those kids. Glad I numbered these. So we had a daily attendance average of fifty-nine students, weekly attendance average of two ninety-five, and a monthly average of one thousand one hundred eighty students. We served almost seven hundred fifty snacks and over seven hundred meals this month. I'm also going to provide numbers for the actual programs, but we didn't have those put together for today. So the community events we did, we did the winter meet and greet that we talked about, the parent planning committee that we have worked with the Art Field Columbia County. They hosted the art show. They raffled off baskets that the parent planning committee created. It was nice to see everyone who attended. Tom was there. I was actually homesick because all the illnesses that the kids get, they give us a nice little gift. So we also hosted conversations with the superintendent, which was really great. Thursday on December twenty-first, Dr. Tyneman came in, shared a really inspiring conversation with a small group of community members. She'll be there again this third Thursday of January the eighteenth. And then they're going to move on to other locations in the area because the district is actually quite large. But we're hoping to provide childcare if we can for that day so that more parents can come. And then there's some photos of the meet and greet. Community events while we were off for the winter break, we went to the basketball tournament. We got to watch JV, adversity boys and girls play. It's a lot of fun. And it was nice to be out in the community and, you know, spending time with the kids outside of the sun. What do you all started this past weekend? They use the farm and basketball league. Registration is closed. If you have someone else to do skills and drills, we can always get them in. So let us know. Our numbers were around a hundred forty-seven students per this year. A lot of school and girls' kids, so hopefully those kids stick with it and stay in the program as they get older. And there's Saturdays. We're at the high school mostly. There are a couple of weekends where they're double booked and I'll be at MC Smith. But you guys got a slow Saturday. Come on by. That's when we were doing skilled drill before the season started. Not much going on up there these days, but we did have a lot of flooding when the rest of the city was also experiencing a lot of flooding. It was pretty kind. You can see the usually path in front of the bleachers. DPW came by, helped us clear that blockage. The flooding didn't deter people. They were walking on the wall anyway, so people still got their fix in. And then I'm going to be doing a monthly budget report just to keep you guys updated on what's going on, any big expenditures that have popped up. I wasn't able to get it completed for this week, but all the breaks and everything coming back to school, it was just a lot. So I'll have that shared. If there's anything specific you guys are interested in, just shoot me an email and I'll make sure I can say. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Liz. Any questions from council members?
It's a great report. Thank you for taking the time. It's very detailed, including attendance. I was wondering, are there any short trips the kids are going to be doing this winter? Or how about ice skating or like doing?
We're looking at doing at least one field trip for each age group. Currently trying to collaborate with the county who pays for our busing to make sure that we can have the field trip. Because if we go without the county bus, we've just got the vans and we can only take like half, a third of the kids. That seems entirely fair, so.
So we have to pay the county?
The county provides buses and they pay for it. That's why the law happens.
Do you have any ideas for it?
There was this arcade that opened up near Albany that's a arcade and vegan cafe. We're going to take them to. But our project coordinator is working on it, so I'll just circle back up there.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions from council members? From the public? Anyone question? Well, thank you, Liz. Take your lead. Is Mia on there?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll skip that. Heather, ready to give us your report?
Well, yes and no, Tom. I am. I made the mistake of, apparently I overwrote my new January report with the December title, so I do not have a document to show you. But I have jotted down the things that I remember from it. I will update it again and issue it to everyone tomorrow, so I apologize for that. So basically, this is sort of a summary of where we are to date for 2023. You would think because it's now 2024, we would know where we are at with 2023, but that is not the case. Explaining this primarily for, you know, the new council members that aren't aware. There are a number of revenues that we get in after the fact that really have to be credited to 2023. So it takes several months for us to determine what those are. And in the same way, there are several expenditures that don't come in until the first quarter of 2024, but they're actually 2023 expenditures. So even though it seems like the numbers for the end of December 2023 are the final numbers, they are not, and they won't be for quite some time. Having said that, I can tell you where we are to date on most of them. We generally look at like four parking revenues. We look at parking permits, parking meters, parking tickets, and the Amtrak lot. Those people who have carried over from last year will know that we had actually already hit our number as of November last year. So we're doing fine for that in terms of the 2023 numbers. We did take those numbers up in 2024, and that's actually on my overwritten document that I will recreate. You'll see that the 2024 number actually went up a fair bit, but that's also because we have money dedicated to looking at a new parking ticket system, specifically kiosks. And everyone's consensus was with the controls that you can have over that. You can do, you know, time slice pricing, so it costs more during certain periods of time and so forth, that we were comfortable in taking that number up. So you'll see that on the document. A next sort of big number that we look at on generally are building permits, so building permits and plumbing permits. We were already at a hundred and fifty percent of our budget as of November of 2023, so that number looks very good for this year. The next thing that we look at are basically sales, mortgage, and lodging tax, so the big tax things. Sales tax, we don't know because we don't get our fourth quarter 2023 payment. We won't get until probably the end of January or early February of 2024. So once we have that number, we will charge it back, but we were trending positively versus our budget number. And for 2024, I think we were pretty stable on that number, so feeling pretty good about that. Mortgage tax is always a little variable. It's relatively unpredictable. We came in at about eighty-four percent of our 2023 budget, and I believe we budgeted approximately the same for 2024. Lodging tax, I did a reconciliation through December. We're at about four hundred and sixty thousand and change versus a budget of five fifty. But we also have a chargeback because the the tax filing for, that's due in March of 2024, actually includes monies for 2023 because we chose to tie it in with the New York sales tax timing structure. So it's a little complicated, but so we won't know until we get that last filing in what we think we've got in for 2023 as a total. We're also pretty confident, as Tom can say, we received a memo recently from Michelle Tullo and Peyton Messina, who is the Housing Justice Director and our Compliance Officer, who've done a huge amount of work in sort of studying where we are in compliance. And I think we're all pretty confident that there's opportunity there. Let's just put it that way. So the 2024 budget may look aggressive, but I think we all feel that it's doable. So that's basically it for the big, you know, revenue highlights. A couple of other things is we are in the midst of the 2022 financial audit. We now anticipate that being done by the end of this month, and you will obviously all get a copy of that. And we generally ask if you would like the auditors to come in and present, which I assume you will. So that'll give you a chance to see how 2022 went. We did our first payroll with our new payroll company, ADP. It was challenging, to say the least. Ask any one of your payroll clerks how they feel about it. But again, very rocky start, but everybody seems pretty confident that once we get the basics down, it will actually be an improvement. One thing that I want to keep high on the list is that for the sidewalk improvement district, that needs to obviously get started this year. The big thing for me and for a real property and for tax billing is whether or not the fees that are determined to be calculated and have to be added to each tax bill, whether or not they have to be on the preliminary assessment roll or not. So I spoke to Suzette Bowie again today. She's reaching out to Tompkins County because they've implemented this already. And we're going to find that out. And as soon as we find it out, Tom, I will let you know. And that will basically determine the timeline. It's either going to be very, very fast because it will have to be done for the tentative assessment roll, which has to be done by May first, or we'll have until, you know, a month or two before the tax bills go out. So I hope to have that information before the end of this week. And then just the last things, I don't have any resolutions for you to review today, but I will have a minimum of four for next week. I will get them to you obviously well before the twenty-four hour waiting period. The first one is for a budget amendment for 2023 hospitalization. We budgeted and we budgeted for a pretty significant increase over the prior year based on the insurance carriers' numbers. The number came in significantly higher than that. It turns out we've got more people taking insurance than traditionally have, and we've got more people taking like family insurance than have had traditionally. So it just caused the number to skyrocket. Right now, it looks like 2024 still might be okay because we did a pretty aggressive increase on that, but you're going to see that. Elena mentioned the contract. I didn't hear most of it, but the one thing that is important is we did budget for a potential increase in the salary increases. It's in the contingency. For those people who are new, a contingency is basically we may spend it, we may not. You can't spend out of that account. So you'll see a resolution taking those funds and moving them back into the police personal services line so that they have the funds available to meet the contractual obligations. So you shouldn't worry about that at all. Friends of Hudson Youth, you're going to see one, an encumbrance, which is basically when you say, oh, we have money in this budget, but it's earmarked for the next year. That's called an encumbrance. We generally don't do this till February or March. But for Friends of Hudson Youth, we do an exception because they want to make sure that the money is available for the youth department as soon as possible. So they put something in what's called undesignated funds, basically, and we move that over. And then the fourth one is just a sort of a weird bookkeeping thing in which with our new payroll company, they are debiting their costs, their monthly expenditures, out of our payroll account, which is generally not how it's happened. So basically, I'm just going to put a quick resolution together that says that you guys authorize the fact that we can pay them in this manner because I believe that is what we agreed to do, which basically precludes the need for a voucher. So it's really just like a, you know, a housekeeping thing. And that's it for me for now.
Thank you, Heather. Questions from council members? Public? Anyone? Okay, thank you, Heather. Rob apparently is not available this week. He's on vacation, undisclosed. So next is Chief Franklin.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome new council members.
Thank you.
So every month I report just on our stats, and I just want to put it out there. Anybody has anything that we don't report on, but you want to hear about it, please let me know, email me or whatever, and I can make sure that we get it there. Council member Deskalubi requests AAPIs, so accidents involving pedestrians. So we did have one of those last month, and I'll talk about that at the end. So for December, number of use of forced incidents were zero. The number of arrests and bookings were twenty-one arrests for twenty-three, or excuse me, sixty-three total charges. The number of emotionally disturbed person calls was ten. And then the number of calls involving a drug overdose or suspected drug overdose was one. And that was actually unfounded. It was reported by 911. Officers went to the home. She was fine. It wasn't an overdose at all, and she was fine. The accident involving pedestrians was actually on the night of winter walk. I don't know if any of you have heard about it. It was at Seventh and State Street. My mother was walking her two-year-old child across the street. She was holding her child. And she was bumped by a car, fell to the ground. Baby was fine, child was fine. Witness said the vehicle was driving at a slow rate of speed. Mother just had some scrapes and everything was fine. The operator of the vehicle said it was because of the dark, the lighting was poor on the street and didn't see her crossing the road. And at the time, I will say, I'm sure it was pretty dark out that night, Seventh and State. I'm not sure off the top of my head if there are any lights out there, but I don't believe that there's a crosswalk. I don't believe there was a crosswalk there at night where she was crossing.
It is dark.
So I think there was discussions to try to put one there. I'm not sure, but I think there was. So maybe that's something to consider. The stop sign at Paddock Place that was recently taken down, I spoke with the commissioner today. It will be put back up. I don't know the timeline for that, like will be put back up?
Thank you.
And then there was one other thing I wanted to note, and I can't really speak about it anymore because it is an ongoing investigation. We did execute a search warrant on Columbia Street last month, the end of last month, with the assistance of the state police. It was due to a felony rape investigation. However, I can't, again, I can't speak on any details because it is an ongoing investigation.
Thank you, Chief. Questions from the council?
Is it on this or in everything?
What do you mean?
I'll do all the other reports, please.
Chief, you're referring to the incident that happened in Two Hundred Block coming from the street?
Yes.
It's welcome. It's pretty good.
Anybody in the public? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Franklin. So moving right along, we have just a few resolutions which we will introduce. First resolution is appointing commissioners of the Sky of an Instruction as second.
Good one.
Go on, insurance. The second resolution reappoints Michael O'Hara and Nathaniel Woodhall as members of the Conservation Advisory Council. The third resolution authorizes the transfer of funds to the council's council account for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. That's from last year. And the last resolution accepts a fifty-dollar donation from Orfeo LLC on behalf of the fire department. We have a law that needs to be introduced, the second. For the new members, Margaret, could you give a quick summary to them of what it is actually?
I will try. It's been a while since I've looked at it. Essentially, this law sets up a scenario where the city can come up with an aggregate purchase of energy, which will prioritize solar or renewable energy. It is specifically for consumers, for residents. When you read it, there are various, it's very standard, whether it's off dinner or whatever. Essentially, if you're currently getting your service in the city, Essentially, if you're currently getting your service included, you would be brought into this aggregate thing, which the goal would be to reduce your cost, but also to increase our use of green energy. You have the option to opt out. It basically runs like a, an insurance broker would run. So there is a broker that goes out and looks for aggregate green energy for the city. They are responsible for the administrative part of this, they are responsible, for example, for maintaining a customer service line five days a week. And you'll see all of that in the, in the law itself, but essentially, this is not a cost to the city. It provides an opportunity for residents to have more choice, and by doing aggregate, we potentially have a reduction in costs. Very significantly, we want to prioritize green energy, making that accessible to residents, so that, I think, is pretty close with.
Get some idea, yes.
So you did a better job than the guy who will.
Oh, yeah, I remember that, yeah.
The other benefit is like to get some points.
Yes, that's, that's the whole green thing, yes.
Right, yeah, so we get some points which would help us in getting grants in future.
But only if we go with options, that's why we have to really decide.
I'm sorry, I need an instruction in a second? Okay, Duane and Mike. Also on our desk is the local law adding a chapter to the city code about filming in Hudson. And that'll come up soon. Okay, that's the end of business. Any, sorry, did we get copies of the law? Yes.
We do, yes.
Yes.
Tom, I had said something very late in the day.
Oh, I didn't get what?
I, you may not have. It was a revised resolution relating to the Britain Mammon study, so that we can move forward on doing our speaker talk, talk to Heather about the wording. Michael is still trying to get back to the PD's office, we've both reached out to try to get more information. So if possible, I'd like to have to ask for next, for next week.
You only send it to?
Well, I sent it to you guys because you're part of the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
So I didn't know if you sent it to? Oh, I see, it was a committee.
Yeah. Yeah, I just sent it to people who have been involved with it. I didn't want to send it to the whole council because Tom may not have wanted to put it on the agenda. But if we could have that, it's just a very simple one-pager, I pulled it in December because I hadn't added language relating to seventy-five hundred dollars. I hadn't added language relating to where that money was gonna come from. So I amended it to say general fund, however, in the event that we are able to get use of the outstanding money that we have from the truck study that we got from D D Barrett's office, then we would refund the general. But this will help, this is a process we need to undergo to get an engineer to sign off on, you know, the reasonableness and never enough, you know, failure to ownership. And then it's a fairly straightforward process citywide to have this need reduced to twenty-five months, that's, that's the goal.
Is that clear to new members, what that's all about?
Sorry?
I was asking a new member if they understood what that was all about.
Yeah, we're gonna get the resolution.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, definitely.
I get the gist.
Got it, okay.
City website, not specifically email.
Oh, see, I was gonna say, thank you.
I just wanted to.
So, any, all your new business?
Is there any update on City Hall? But first, Michael.
Sure.
Any update in the city?
So there was a bid opening for the asbestos removal portion for the basement, and we did get a bid that was within budget. Rob just needed to do additional verification that that bid was for all of the work that we need them to do, because it was a little bit unclear. So once we get all of their final documents, we'll have a contract in place and we'll be able to tell you when the schedule is for that. And then, in turn, we will figure out the schedule for pulling back.
What is the timetable of removal, I mean, how long did they say?
Usually, I, I don't have that information, but usually a project like this would not take more than a week, so it's just a matter of finding the timing of it.
Thank you.
And for those who are new, there's one last, you know, City Hall was remodeled. There's one last bit, which is asbestos abatement in the basement, until that's done, we can't get back in there.
Is there any update on Commissioner for corporate work?
I do not have update, correct.
I think the sidewalk thing is kind of pending, having a commissioner, the sidewalk board.
Yeah, I think, of course, you have to commission, because, right, exactly.
It's written, it needs the commissioner.
Right, now it means, yeah, we need a couple of things for that, yeah, to get moving.
Awesome, Michael, is there a way that we can get a report that we can give, we got it to party heads from seniors?
Yes, we've requested Mia to attend, but she hasn't been able to join this meeting recently, so we'll get back.
Yeah, I'll follow up, I did, she was regularly invited, and she just hasn't attended. But I will follow up and make sure she comes through.
Please, I mean, if she can't come, just submit a report like the others.
Sure.
Make sure.
Anything else from council members? Public, anything from the public? I don't see anything. Since there's, since you're no public questioning, do I have a motion to adjourn? Most of the law. And Margaret? All those in favor, see if they have the same eye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.